Stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We're going to pause for a moment of silent meditation in honor and memory of Philip Wright. He was a man that had a passion for this town and worked tirelessly for the good of our community. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to be at this place at this time. Father, we pray that we will do the things that are necessary for our community, for our citizens, and that we will all be together on one accord of what is best to do. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. The first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda, and we need to delete under number eight, B, one, BI. The fund balance policy needs to be deleted. That's already been taken care of. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Councilwoman Carolyn Dobbin made the motion. Councilman Protem J.C. Trippett made the second. All in favor, let it be known, say, all opposed. We have the approval of the minutes, the regular council meeting for January the 17th, 2022. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to these? Mayor Protem Trippett made the motion to approve. Councilman Brown seconded, all in favor, let it be known, but say, and I, all opposed. We have the special town council meetings of January the 31st. Mayor Protem Trippett made the motion to approve. Councilman Jurnigan seconded, all in favor, all opposed. We had the special closed session minutes for January the 31st. I think y'all have all looked at them. Any corrections or additions to those? Councilman Jurnigan made the motion to approve. Councilman Brown seconded, all in favor, let it be known, but say, and I, all opposed. At this time, we open the public hearing for the property finance bid agreement. Anybody wishing to speak on this public hearing, please come forward, sign in, state your name. You all have in your packet the information that was given to us at our meeting. We are to... Y'all have any comments on it? Does everybody understand? Have any questions for Leanna or... Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to accept the bid?
Can you turn your microphone on?
I make a motion that we accept the bid from KS Bank at 3.95% for five years for a total of $3.1 million.
That would be for 1.5 million if that, I think, if you'll admit that.
Yeah, one is 1.5.
1.5.
That's why we're barring.
Yeah, 1.5 million, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, please.
Okay, I'll repeat. I make a motion that we accept the bid from KS Bank with 3.95% for five years for a total of $1.5 million.
Council Protem, Mayor Protem, J.C. Trippett made the motion to accept the bid. Councilman Brown seconded. In the form of discussion on this, to let everyone know, we had a response from, we had a bid for two truists. They never responded. We had a bid to United Community Bank, and then we had a bid to KS Bank. KS Bank was the lowest bid. Anyone else have any comments on this motion? All in favor?
I would just say that when we say bids, we're actually talking about the financing rate and for five years. So KS Bank, which is a local community bank, really, really come in and help town citizens out with that interest rate.
All in favor of the motion? All opposed? Okay. We now have a presentation to us from our auditorium. And I think we all have our audit forms in front of us and the presentation that he's going to give us. Mr. Sharp, glad to have you with us tonight, and I hope you've got a lot of information for us.
My name is Jay Sharp. I'm the audit partner for Sharp Patel, and we conducted the town's audit for the year into June 30th, 2022. I appreciate you having me out tonight. So I do have a presentation, which you have a copy of in front of you. It's going to be three parts, kind of talk about the audit proceedings, the results of the audit, and then some financial trend analysis. So we'll get started with the status. The field work has been completed. The financial statements have been prepared, and the audit has been submitted and approved by the local government commission. We cannot issue the audit until a local government commission approves that on an annual basis, and so the audit's complete. Background of our roles and objectives as auditors. We don't just come in and start crunching numbers, as they say. We do some planning procedures upfront. Most of those are regarding internal controls. We've conducted this audit for several years, so we just get an update of any internal controls in place, and we may test some of those controls year in and year out. So for 2022, we tested controls over cash disbursements, over payroll, and over credit cards. From our understanding of internal controls and from the results of our test controls, we perform what you call a risk-based audit approach. We're going to assess each of the significant financial reporting areas of the town. For example, cash, revenues, expenses. We're going to concentrate our audit procedures on the higher-risk areas. We are going to look at every significant financial reporting area the town has. And we do that because you hire us to give an opinion on the financial statements. And in order to do that, we have to gain what we call sufficient audit evidence. And to do that, and the opinion concentrates on whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So the results for the 2022 audit, scope and the timing of the audit, we're on track, no issues there. I'm happy to report once again, the town received what we call an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That is the best possible opinion you can receive, a clean opinion on the financial statements for 2022. Happy to report there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted, so no findings. So if we see any issues during our audit, we're required to communicate that to you. There were no findings noted during the 2022 audit. We did have several minor audit adjustments, but these are just usual audit adjustments. We have nothing unusual this year. So to kind of summarize, a clean audit opinion and no findings for 2022. In addition to the audit, we're required to communicate several things to you in a separate letter, kind of communications letter. There's four main talking points with that. First of all, if there's any major accounting policy changes, we're supposed to let you know about that. There was a new standard that came into place this year that affected all governments. It was a lease standard, did not affect your financial reporting, but the town does enter into any major leases in the future. It will affect how you account for those. One of the areas we look at very closely during the audit are estimates. Some numbers are hard and fast numbers, and some are developed based on estimates. Your two major estimates are the depreciable lives of your capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. We looked at those estimates, they appeared reasonable, no issues there. Happy to report no disagreements with management and no difficulties encountered whatsoever during the audit process. Complete cooperation from everybody at the town. So from our perspective, it was what you call a pleasant audit.
That's good to know.
I don't know about from their perspective or from our perspective. So we'll follow, we'll kind of finalize the presentation tonight, going through the numbers. First of all, we're going to look at the trend for revenues and expenses. This is specifically just your general fund. Red represents revenues, blue represents expenses. So for 2022, you did see an increase in both revenues and expenses. Revenues went up to almost $1.8 million. Your expenses went up to just over $2 million for the year. Additional information with governmental reporting here in a second. Look at the next fund balance. So your fund balance is the town's net worth at a given point in time. If you can see, back in 2017, you had it just below $1.1 million in overall fund balance in your general fund. At the end of 2022, it was over $1.3 million. You did see a decrease in that because some additional spending during the year, but we'll see some additional information about your fund balance here in a couple of slides. The breakdown of fund balance is very critical to the town's financial position. So for the town, Wilson's Mills, there's three areas of your fund balance. Restricted by state statute, which is the blue section there, restricted, other restrictions, which is the red. And the important one there is the orange. That's your unassigned fund balance. That's where it's available to be spent by the town. And what the LGC is, they look at that, they compare that to your expenditures. They want to see that to be 8% at the very minimum. For 2022, your unassigned fund balance was 49% of your expenses. So you're, you know, five, six times what the LGC likes to see indicates that the town has a healthy fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2022. So no issues there. Some calculations we do, cash reserves. So we're looking at your unrestricted cash, comparing it to your expenses. How long can you continue operating if you receive no more cash? For 2022, there was 186 days, so half a year. We generally recommend this to be at least three to six months, so you fall within that, no issues there. Property taxes. So your revenues from property taxes have steadily gone up since 2018. Back in 2018, you had revenues of about $683,000 for property taxes. For 2022, that crossed the $900,000 threshold for the town's property tax revenue. If you look at the next slide, your property tax rates have remained exactly the same throughout the same time period. So your revenues have gone up, the property tax rates have stayed the exact same. How did the town spend its money for 2022? Obviously, an important item. The number one item remains public safety at 41%, followed by public works at 21% and administrative expenses at 15%. The breakdown was similar to last year. The only difference was you did have more debt service because you did pay down your debt this year. You paid that completely off for your general fund. I said there's going to be some additional information on your revenues and expenses. So during 2022, you received some additional revenues, one-time revenues you had not received in the past. If you look at this, your revenues for governmental reporting were over $4.2 million. You did not expend majority of those. Those are related to the ARC funds or the American Rescue Plan. And also, you received a nice grant from the state, the SCIF grant of $2 million. And so that, you know, added to your other operations. You had $4.2 million in overall government revenues for 2022. And of course, the SCIF and ARC funds had remained mostly unspent at the end of the year. And if we look at, take that into consideration, your governmental fund balance was almost $3.8 million. So quite a difference, obviously, compared to just the general fund. Shows that the town is very fiscally healthy at the end of June 30th, 2022, no issues there. Finally, I want to talk about your water and sewer fund. For the first time in the last couple of years, the water and sewer fund actually had an operating profit. Your revenues were $175,000. Your expenses were $165,000 for 2022. Now, the majority of your operating expenses are depreciation. This is a non-cash expense. This is a depreciation of your fixed assets related to the water and sewer fund. You take that out, and you know, you had a nice profit overall with your water and sewer fund. Cash reserves. So you know, calculated the cash reserve for your water and sewer fund. That was 315 days. You saw a nice jump in that because your cash balances did go up and your expenditures actually went down. We took the depreciation out of that equation because depreciation is a non-cash expense. So a healthy cash reserve, both for your general fund and for your water and sewer fund at the end of 2022. But with that, I'd be glad to take any questions you may have on the audit procedures, the results of the audit, or the numbers themselves. But once again, a clean audit opinion and no findings this year.
Does counsel have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for having me on.
Thank you so very much. A clean audit is good. Thank you, Ms. Sherry, because you're the one that made it that way. At this time, I will open the first open forum. If anybody has anything that they would like to address, counsel. Please come forward, sign in. If not, I'm going to close the open forum. And we'll go into the business. Well, I had this somewhere. I already lost my list. There it is. I just wanted to give you an update on some of the things that I have been doing for, since our last meeting. Leanna and I attended the workforce development meeting at Johnston County Ag Department. It was a very good presentation to the county, letting us know where we can get our workforce for the businesses that may be coming into our community that I hope we will have one day. It was a very good presentation, and Leanna and I got some good ideas and met with some people. And that, I think, is one of the main things for us, is the networking that we can get when we go to these meetings, to meet other people from the county and work, talk with them and work with them. The department heads had a retreat, and they allowed me to attend part of their meeting. Enjoyed it very much, guys, y'all do a good job. I'm very proud of our staff, our department heads. Everybody that works for the town has a very positive attitude, and it shows in your workforce, and I'm proud of you. I just wanted to tell y'all that. I hosted the mayor's meeting this month, that double barley, and Leanna and Patrick came out to help me. We had nine mayors present. We had a presentation from the chairman of the Board of Education for Johnston County to address us, and we had a very good meeting. We also had some more information on the partners network that's coming down. I hope we get that going soon. Leanna and I were on a Zoom meeting to kick off that partners network. We found that there's still a lot of work to be done to get it all organized, but we're hoping that they can get that organized. We're part of a four-county partner network. We are dealing with EdgeCom, Wilson, Nash, Johnson. I'm leaving one out. No, that's it. Nash, Wilson, EdgeCom, and Johnson are in the network for us. And I will tell you that our Wilson Mills is one of the reasons that Johnston County can participate. Wilson Mills and Micro put us in the category that we can be a part of that network, and that is supposed to make it more available for us to get grants and funding through USDA. So we'll still work with that and see what we can do to get that moving. I'm trying to be as proactive as I can as the mayor to attend the meetings, to do the workshops, to be where I'm supposed to be, to represent the town. And if anybody knows of anything that I need to do or where I need to be, please let me know, and I'll try to be there. Okay, Ms. Leanna, you've got a lot of stuff, honey.
Do my best to make this short and sweet. The first item that you have is the adoption of the fee schedule. And again, this was brought to you for the first time in November 22 at your meeting, and you reviewed it, looked over some of the changes, and it was a first reading, if you will, and we requested that if you had any additions or changes, to come back to the staff. We did not have any suggested changes. We reviewed this again, and we are now recommending that you pass this fee schedule as presented, and I'll be welcome, I'll be happy to take any questions if anybody's got any.
This does include the items that were increased to match the surrounding area, because we had several that we were low on, weren't we?
Correct.
And so this includes all of those that were marked.
That's correct.
Okay.
So on the first copy that you have, the right-hand column shows whether there was a change and what that change was. And then the second copy is the actual copy of the fee schedule that you would be approving for publication.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure of. Anyone have any question about the fee schedule? I think we've had a chance to look at it and...
I move we adopt the fee schedule as written.
Councilman Brown made the motion. Councilman Jurnigan seconded, all in favor. Any opposed?
The second item that you have is the, on the citizen input. Whenever you approved your strategic plan, this was one of your more important goals, was increasing citizen input on what's going on in town and the growth in the area. And when the department heads met back in July, one of the things that we talked about was creating some sort of citizen input that we could get out to the community. We don't like to call it a survey because most people don't really care for surveys, but we would like to put this on the website and then post that link to the Facebook page. We've also got what's called a QR code that we'll be handing out to different people, the police department, public works, planning, code enforcement, basically all of the staff, when they come in contact with members of the community, to give that to them so that they can scan that and do it on their phone, on their computer. Again, it should be on the website and Facebook page. And... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
That's good, I like that idea.
Oh, okay, I couldn't tell if you were looking at...
No, 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 I like...
Me, I had to take my glasses off. So I have included a copy of the questions that the staff has come up with. And again, we talked about this at our July retreat and again at our retreat in January, based on some of the things that we have going on and some things that you have in your strategic plans. So a lot of it focuses on the park, the events, and also asking people if they would be willing to volunteer at town events. We have a lot of people who ask us questions like, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? And usually, our answer is, we don't have the staff, we don't have the manpower to do some of that. And not everybody wants to go attend another meeting every month to be actually on the events committee. So if people would be willing to just volunteer for different events, we'd like to find that out, too. So we added that information. But we'd be happy to talk about any other questions that you think we may not have thought about to put on here. We tried to keep it short because we want to be considerate of people's time and get a lot of participation and filling it out, so we don't want it to take people a long time. But if there's anything you have questions about...
When they go on and the website, they can fill it out right there.
Yes.
Right? And if they go onto Facebook, it will be able to be filled out and just come right back to y'all.
Yes.
My question is, who's going to be monitoring it?
Any kind of fillable form on the website is assigned to a person that it'll come back to. So it'll probably be one of the admin staff.
Okay.
And then we'll collect those. We haven't decided on a closing date for it because we would like to close the date on it so that we can gather that information, present it to you, and then use that information going forward in not only your budget session but updating the strategic plan to see if anything needs to be changed. So we're hoping that once we can get it out, after you all approve it, we'll probably have it out for about 60 days.
Does anyone see anything that we need to add to this list? I think it's pretty...
No, I read through it, and I think they're great questions. My only thing, excuse me, is can we just not leave it up all the time? So we can look at it like, from this point, a year later, at what folks have been... Because things are going to change over the next year. I mean, but at some point, you can say, okay, for this upcoming year, we're going to stop it here.
Yeah.
And then continue to receive input from the town.
Sure.
All the way through the year. And then next year, you can say, well, this is what has been submitted by the town, the citizens. I mean, I like, I think that's a good way for them to communicate because they're, you know, most folks are not going to go to a town hall meeting unless you're talking about raising property taxes or annexing their property or something like that. So it's a good way for them to communicate, you know, through that website to us so we know what the town citizens are thinking.
And if this is something that you want to leave up all year, we could update it at the beginning of the year to leave open until your budget sessions or at the beginning of our fiscal year, rather. So at the beginning of July, we would update this, and leave it on there throughout the year, and then collect that information before you start your budget sessions to see if there's anything...
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, but as far as time, you know, when you collect, and I would leave that up to you. But I would love to see it stay up all year round.
I would, too, and set a time where you're going to collect the information so that we'll know that it was up for 60 days or 90 days, and let us know that that's how much you received in that time. Okay.
Now, Leanna, the ones that don't have, like, Facebook and all of that, how will we get the forms back from them?
So in addition to that QR code, the staff will have copies of this with them. If somebody doesn't feel comfortable doing it online or they don't, they aren't capable of doing that, they can get a paper copy and they can fill it out, turn it back in at town hall.
What Ms. Carolyn is asking is, do they need to go to town hall? I think, no, I don't mean, do they need to go to town hall to pick one up, fill it out, and return it to town hall? Or they're going to be dispersed in the town?
They can, they can come to town hall and pick it up, or like, again, we'll have staff that will have copies of it, the ones that are out and about with police department code enforcement. But we will have some at town hall, but no, we're not planning to do like a mass mailing of a paper copy.
Well, let me ask this. If we know of someone who doesn't have internet and didn't know Facebook stuff, can they call town hall and we mail them one?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, you can.
Absolutely.
And if we want to, we can get some and just pass it out.
Yes, ma'am.
And, okay.
Because some of our older folks don't do the Facebook and internet and stuff.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. We would love for everybody to spread the word about it. So if there's somebody that you know of that wouldn't get that information otherwise, they're not... Maybe they're, you know, a shut-in, elderly, disabled, whatever, and they would need help getting a copy of it or they just may not be somewhere where they would even find out about it. We would love for everybody to spread the word about it.
And I would just like to say, anybody that's watching online tonight, please spread the word. We want to hear from you.
Right, yes.
We want to know, we want your input for our budget planning sessions. But we don't, you know, we don't read minds, or at least I don't. But we want to know what you think. And if you know of somebody who needs one of these surveys that's in the town limits. Now, if you live outside the town limits, please don't call. But this is for people inside of the town limits. And if they need, if they need one of these, let's get them one.
Unless they want to volunteer to help with events. And we would take anybody all the way to California if you wanted to help us with an event.
Okay, we need to watch out, think. We need to prove it. Second. Okay, motion was made by Councilman Jernigan second. That's Councilman Dobbin, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
The next item is the name for the town development across Highway seventy, which is future I forty-two. And this, again, was presented to you at the September meeting last year. And council asked to have some time to think it over. We discussed it again in our last department head retreat. This is in your strategic plan goal, is to name that development area. And we still recommend the Midtown Village. We didn't have any other suggestions or comments from anybody after that last meeting.
I like that. I think it sounds good. And we're talking about there between Swift Creighton and...
Yes, sir.
Strickland.
Strickland, yeah.
Yes, sir. This whole development and area in your strategic plan, one of the things that you asked us to focus on was a plan for what would be out there and work with the developer on what types of businesses and other facilities would be out there. And that's what the department heads have been doing. And this should have like a downtown village feel, but it is geographically going to be the middle of our incorporated limits. So that's why we have discussed the Midtown Village. And we would like to market it as Midtown Village at Wilson's Mills to keep our name in it. I'm sure it would be shortened at some point to Midtown.
And the reason we want to go ahead and name it is because the developer wants to use the name when he is approaching businesses.
Right.
This business will be located at... At Midtown Village at Wilson Mills.
With it being in the geographical middle, I think it's great. But it's being planned as a little village, you know, downtown area. So, I mean, I like the idea. So I'll make a motion that we adopt Midtown Village at Wilson's Mills.
I see.
It's at Wilson's Mills. Yeah. Motion's been made? Okay, I didn't know your second. Councilman Brown made the motion to accept it. Mayor Protem Trippett seconded it, all in favor? Any opposed?
The next item is an update on the strategic plan. And I did send out a copy of my report on each item for the strategic plan. I wonder if you have any specific questions about it? I'd be happy to answer them. I don't know that you want me to go over everything, but...
Are there any items that we are not up to date on?
I did highlight the items that we are either not on our timeline schedule or they've been moved for some reason. I think the biggest one is going to be the feasibility study, which I have on here to update you after the rest of the items. But just to let you know on that, and it is in here as well, that grant that we got, the RTGF grant, once it was awarded, there are several pieces of paperwork from both Department of Commerce and other state agencies that have to be filled out. And they send those... One state agency will send it, I'll send it back, and then there'll be another state agency that's got another. So we're on our last packet of paperwork. And they don't want us to move forward with any part of the work until all of the paperwork has been completed by all of the agencies. So we're on the last packet of paperwork that's supposed to be finished this week. And then we can send out the RFQ. So we can't even send that out yet until we have that. But she's assured me that by the end of the week, we should be able to send that out next week. But that was actually scheduled to be started by December of 2022. And that's when we found out about this grant. So it didn't even get awarded until around Christmas time. So and I've got June as the updated expected completion just because by the time we get the RFQ out, get it back, you all approve it, and we give them time to complete the study. That's an estimate for right now. If that changes, I'll change it on the report. The other item that is probably... Is the staffing plan. That was one that was slated to be completed by December of twenty-two as well. We have discussed that just recently at the department head retreat in January. And we have one of those, and that's going to be discussed during your budget session. Because that is something that's going to affect the budget each year, is the staffing plan and how that will change at the beginning of our fiscal year over year. So those will be reviewed at your budget sessions as well.
Do we need to... There's no action that we need to take on that?
No action on this. If you have questions, let me know. The other part of that is an update on the department head retreat. And I just want to say, as the mayor said earlier, we had another really good retreat. We go over each goal in the strategic plan at these retreats. Each goal has a champion assigned to it, which is one of our department heads. And so I'm not going to go through the entire staff retreat with you or department head retreat. But this past one that we had in January, we did do a lot of updates to the timeline, which is what you see on that report that I sent to you for the strategic plan. And one thing to note with those timelines on there is by twenty-four, twenty-five, which is only two fiscal years away, which sounds crazy, I know.
Yeah.
This strategic plan will be completely outdated. So not this coming fiscal year that we're getting ready to start budget planning for, but the following one. We will need to look at setting some money aside to have the strategic plan updated and move forward with more plans for the future. And we hope we can base a lot of that on the input that we get from the citizens. Does anybody have any questions about either one of those? The next item is, the next two items are to ratify resolutions about the purchase of the property and also filing the application for financing with the LGC. You did have a special meeting on January thirty-first that was publicized and did everything correctly. The attorney and I talked since that was at a special meeting because we were on a timeline with the LGC that we present those again at your open meeting to make sure that the public is aware of everything that's going on and that you just ratify both of those decisions again in your regular meetings. Sorry, not... The other one was a public meeting until you went into closed session, but this is your regular meeting. So that was the attorney's advice, was to bring these back before you to ratify. And we do need a vote on both of those.
Votes on separately.
I did include, again, the purchase and sale agreement that you approved on January thirty-first. That needs to be ratified. And then the resolution authorizing the filing of an application. And that is for the financing with KS Bank. But it is for the LGC that you're filing an application for financing with the LGC.
Okay. So y'all, we've already been through this one time. But just so that everybody knows what we are doing, we are purchasing, this is a purchase and sell agreement between the town of Wilson Mills and the property owner to purchase eleven point five acres of land that has four main buildings on it, two small buildings on it. And we will have the whole track of that land. This is the purchase and sell agreement for that property. It is for an amount of three million, one hundred thousand dollars. Is the purchase price.
I move that we ratify or sign or give formal consent to the purchase and sell agreement dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
We have a motion to approve the purchase and sell agreement. We have it by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Jernigan. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Now, the second part of this is to ratify the application for financing.
Second.
You can turn your microphone on.
He's going to do it again.
Make a motion that we ratify the resolution authorizing filing of an application for financing.
Okay. Just for discussion, we are purchasing the land. We're only borrowing, Leanna, one point five.
Correct.
Because we have the two million that was a grant. So we're only borrowing one point five for the purchase price. I have a motion by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman Brown.
Can I say something before we vote? Just to make sure everybody that's watching knows is we are purchasing this land, the structures that's on it, and some of the contents for this price. So and just to make sure everybody knows, we're not purchasing wetland. I don't know where that come out of. But we're not purchasing wetland. We're purchasing property that is good for the town at this point and moving forward that will serve our purposes later on. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're only paying one point five million because we do have the two million dollar grant that we received.
I have a motion by Councilman Jernigan, a second by Councilman Brown. All in favor? Let it be known by saying I... All opposed? Okay.
The next item is the call of your first budget session, number one, for March second at four-thirty. That was the date that you all came to a consensus on. Did you just need to call that as your special meeting for your budget session, number one?
Okay, is everybody still in agreement with that? Okay, I call a special meeting on March the second, twenty-twenty-three, at four-thirty PM, our first budget session.
Here, it will be here.
Yeah, it'll be here at the school. I just called the meeting.
If you will vote on it here, we won't need to send it back all out to you to sign.
Okay.
Right. That's what you do when you're not meeting.
Okay, make a motion if you're voting.
We call a budget session for March second, twenty-twenty-three, at four-thirty.
I second.
Motion made by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Trippett. All in favor? Now y'all won't have to sign a paper or anything, right?
I just have a couple of other things to note to you. I gave you an update on the feasibility study. I'll keep you updated on that. Also, I think some of you may have been aware that we had planned to take pictures tonight for the new website. We have decided to hire a professional photographer to do the headshots so that everybody is uniform, including the staff. An excellent price, it's only going to be like a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars. But I'll keep you updated on a date. We're going to try to get her out here twice so that we can work with everybody's schedule. But those will probably just be taken at town hall because she has backdrops. And I'll keep you updated on that. The other item is, the department heads also spoke about the IT services and electronics and communications and stuff in the new building. And with that conversation, we started discussing a company called FirstNet. And the department heads met with that company in addition to talking about some of the stuff with the cameras, which I'll leave all of that stuff to the chief. We also discussed the town's cell phone services that we have now for the staff, the cell phones and the Wi-Fi jet packs. Is that what they're called? Yeah. So that they have service in their cars. And this company specializes in servicing public safety, EMS, fire. And we got a quote from them, which is going to save us a little over a hundred dollars a month. So starting next week, we're going to migrate all of the town's cell phones and jet packs over to this new company to save some money. The only other thing I have is, I think they're all here. I would like for my department heads to stand up. And I know that we have grown a lot. We've grown a lot since I started in two thousand and six. And it used to be that department heads were the three employees that we had at town hall. But now we have thirty-something employees. But these department heads are some of the best people that I have ever worked with in my life. And I'm not just saying that, but they are on top of their departments. They're easy to work with. We all get along. And I just wanted to recognize them and thank them for all of their hard work. When we have our department head retreat, it is not a day of fun. It is... I mean, we have a little bit of fun. We all have fun when we work together. But they do a lot of work. They put a lot of thought into everything that they do for this town. And there's not a single one of them that don't have the town at heart. And I will defend them forever because they do a very good job for every department. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything you do and recognize you in front of the people that you work for.
Thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. I will second that. We have an excellent staff. Ms. Sherry?
Okay, well, you heard it from the auditor, so...
We're in good shape.
But the financial statement for January is in the packet. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them.
I like the way the auditor said that it was a pleasant staff.
I know, right?
I get the feeling that he has some staff that may not be pleasant.
I know, right? I'm pretty sure there are other municipalities that aren't so...
Does anybody have any questions for Sherry? Anything stand out to you that you... Sherry, you do a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Ms. Wendy?
Before we get started with this, I would like to go out on a limb and speak on behalf of our department heads. We thank you for the thank you. But we could not do what we do if we did not have a fearless leader. And Ms. Leanna is one of the best supervisors I've ever worked under. She does have our back and she's definitely got the town in her heart as well. You've got the staff report for planning in front of you. Are there any questions on any of that? It seems to get a little bit longer each month. I will say that I have heard from the developers at Olive Branch, we've had the issue with the wastewater pump station sort of being holed up. And unless something major changes, they're hoping that by mid-March, they will have power to that pump station so they can actually record their final plan and start building homes in Olive Branch, which will also open it up for Wilson's Walk over on Coal Road.
You haven't gotten anything on the Tola property yet?
No, ma'am. Not, not officially, no. I think he's still working on all of that. If anyone has any suggestions on what they would like to see on the Tola property, please get with me because he does ask that on a regular basis, what the town would like to see. The one across from Tyler Creek. Olive Branch is over on West Olive Road, across 70 Business by East Hampton. Okay. If there's no questions on that, we'll move on to the request. Recommendation to accept streets at Parish Ridge Subdivision. I've put a lot of information in this report, a little more than normal because we did have some issues out there at times.
I understand that with this report that that has been taken care of.
Yes, ma'am. It has been inspected by myself, by our engineers. I hate to call him a helper because he's an engineer too, but also by Brian because of everything we've been through. It's been through three different inspections just to make sure no one missed anything. It looks really good out there.
To let everyone know, on your resolution page, the, the last name of the street should be Norris, N-O-R-R-I-S, instead of N-O-R-I-D. So when we approve that resolution, that's, that's the four streets we are approving.
So you're comfortable with us going ahead and approving, proving this?
Yes, sir.
Tonight?
Yes, sir.
These will then go on our power bill. Money. Yes, Norris Creek, N-O-R-R-I-S instead of I-D. It was a mistype, so.
I mean, if, if, if that's the case, then, then I, I make a motion that we approve the acceptance of River Camp Street, Haymaker Drive, Benjamin Court, and Norris Creek Drive into the town's street system.
Second.
Councilman Brown made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Trippett made the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Wendy.
The only updates that I have are just the farmer's market. Same update as last month. We have about the same amount of vendors as we did last month. I think we're sitting at either nine or 10 now and a couple food trucks. And like our town administrator said earlier, we are looking for volunteers. We're going to split the events committee into two kind of subcommittees, not with our current members, but anybody who wants to come on board after today. We're going to have a volunteer committee and a planning committee. So anybody that just wants to show up like the day of, and we'll put you somewhere and we'll put you on the volunteer committee. And the people that kind of want to be at the meetings every month and kind of in the planning stages, we'll have them there. So we're splitting the events committee form into two. So get the word out on that, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief.
You've got your report in front of you. Here for any questions if you're having any.
So the, the, the two F-150s, do we have a projected date when they're going to be ready to roll?
No, we checked about two or three days ago. You know, they give us projected dates, but they never meet that particular timeline.
Now, what are, what are they, what are they doing? Radio installs?
Yeah, they're upfitting, radio, striping, lights.
So they do the whole package? They do the decals and everything?
Right.
Okay.
I think there were 10 cars ahead of us, you know? And before that, it was a lot more than that. So we're getting close to our point now.
Well, he, here's something that, that I would suggest that, that you look into and maybe bring back to us is bed covers for those trucks. You know, I, I don't, I mean, there's 100, probably 100 out there. But if they got to put stuff in the back of their truck, they, they're going to have to have some bed covers for those.
I want to say on one of the trucks, we, that is going to be installed, I think.
Okay.
I can't really remember. But we actually looked at the, what do you call it? The cab, the back part.
Camper.
Yeah, camper show. We looked at that also.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just think that if you're going to have a bed, you're going, they're going to put stuff in it.
Right.
I mean, it's going to have to be. And I don't remember us discussing that when we were discussing the, the, the purchase of the trucks. But, but I, I just something I thought about.
It was, it was considered. I want to say one of them may have it. Both may, but that would be part of the upfitting process that we would have been priced in.
But you have it in your budget to, to get it on the other one, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's probably a little way to run there.
All right. And how are we on vehicle situation? I know this is ongoing thing, but.
Well, we still have the other two Tahos that are scheduled. They're in production now and they should be finished sometime early March or whatever. And then they have to be uphit. The other vehicles are doing fine. We just had one that was in a fender bender, some minor damage. They asked to be repaired. But all the vehicles are, are doing well. We only got one over 100,000 miles. And our repair maintenance has been considerably low compared to what it's been in the past.
So make sure you tell, tell your staff that we appreciate what they do for the town.
We're doing reasonably well. We're trying desperately to build a, some spare cars. But we're growing so much that, you know, the spare cars are taken by the new office. So we really don't ever get a spare car.
Well, I know, I know this is aggravating with, with detours and road closures and all this for them. But, but, but tell them we said thank you.
Okay. It looks like we have a policy amendment.
Right. General Order 100-3. It is for code of conduct. Every now and then we would go through and look at some of the policy. And we just thought it was one that needed to be revised or kind of modified a little bit, taking out some unnecessary language and some that we thought was more appropriate.
So this is just taking out pardon and adding a, a section, if I read this right?
Yeah, we took out a few lines, but added.
A lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for the chief on the wording or the amendment that is in this policy?
I make a motion that we approve changes in the policy. General Order Number 100-3.
We have a motion to approve the department policy amendment by Mayor Pro Tem Trippett, a seconded by Councilman Dobbin. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Thank you, chief. Is anything else?
No.
Thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Patrick.
You guys have my report. Any questions?
I just want, and I know I'm being, I'm being vocal tonight, but I see on here 46 bags of trash. Thank you for doing that, sir. You know, we have a very clean town. And, and I think, I want to say thank you for that, running through it every single day.
Anybody have any questions for Patrick? Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Does any of the council have any comment?
I'd just like to say that I think we've done, you've, y'all have done a great job getting this through and maybe pretty soon being in that new building. And I think that's the most, the most important thing we've done for the town of Wilson Mills in a good while. You know, we was worried about getting it there for a while, but it, it worked out. And it mainly worked out because of the work of you, Leanna, and you, Leanna. And we've got to thank both of y'all for what y'all did.
We're still working on it. Yeah.
And, and I would, I was going to say, and I wrote some notes down here. And, and yes, thank you, you department heads. And make sure you pass down to your, your staff that we thank them for what they do because that, you know, we, we, we're on camera once a month. But you guys are the ones that are, are the cogs in the wheel. And we thank you for what you do. We're going to hopefully have a town mo, town hall now, thanks to your, your hard work that, that the town can be proud of. And finally have one that, that is functionable for now. But not just now, but in the future with what we know that we got, we got to do in the future. But, but I just want to say, say thank you. Thank you for, for making, making this happen. And I know it's still in the works, but, but for, for the, the grants and, and stuff that's really helped the town citizens, thank you.
At this time, I open the second open forum. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to come forward. I closed the public forum, I'm open forum. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn? Motion made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman Brown, that we adjourn. Thank you all.